We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say I will call the cases in the order in which they appear in the agenda. There will be one exception to that, which I'll mention in a moment. And we will ask the appellant to come forward, offer any testimony that they would like us to hear, be sworn in and seated in the chairs to my right. And, well, I guess we'll sit down here for the sake of current protocols. And we request that they can find their testimony, if at all possible, to 10 minutes. After the appellant have testified, we will ask them to step down, and then we will ask anyone in the audience who has something to say to come up and offer testimony either in favor or in opposition of the appeal. We ask that members of the audience can find their testimony to five minutes, if at all possible. Following that, we'll check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from the code enforcement office. And then if any testimony has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification or justify factual clarification, the appellate will have that opportunity not to present new arguments, but to clarify any facts that have been raised prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. And under most circumstances, the boards will consider an act on each case before moving on to the next. We are making one adjustment to our agenda this evening, which is that case 0422, 10 Ferry Street, OCP Opportunity Corridor, et cetera, will be moved to the top of the agenda because I have a conflict of interest on that case, and we will have another board member sitting in, and they will be able to leave after that first case. So with that, I will turn the chair over to Mr. Walner and ask him to address case 422.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Our first case tonight is going to be case 0422, 10 Ferry Street, OCP Opportunity Corridor, Performance District, John J. Flatley Company. Applicant wishes to install a third freestanding sign on the side and also requests the following determinations from the ZBA. A. If the proposed freestanding sign that directs illumination onto the adjacent street or onto property other than the premise on which the sign is located is prohibited under Article 2867N. Then we seek variances. Two. One. If the ZBA determines under item above that such a sign is prohibited, applicant seeks a variance under Article 2867N. Signs prohibited, which prohibits eliminated signs that direct the elimination onto adjacent streets or onto property other than the premises on which the sign is located. Two. Article 286NA, table of maximum sign dimensions. To allow a freestanding sign with a height of 50 feet in an area of 440 square feet where a maximum height of 20 feet and a maximum area of 100 square feet is allowed. Three. Article 286NC3, permitted freestanding signs. To allow a freestanding sign to have a horizontal dimension of 22 feet when a maximum horizontal dimension of 16 feet is allowed. And finally, item four. Article 2869C7, to permit a third freestanding sign on the property even though the property now contains two freestanding signs and is less than 10 acres with less than 1,000 feet of street frontage. Better catch my breath.
May I make one correction?
Yes.
It's actually 220 square feet. I think you had one of the first agendas.
So Ernie, why don't you state what the correction is, please?
Yes, the correction would be under item two, to allow freestanding sign with a height of 50 feet and an area of 220 square feet. They changed the design of the sign, which changed it from 440 to 220.
Thank you. Let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, clearly.
State your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Douglas Richardson, John Flatley Company.
John Sokul, Hinckley Allen.
I'm sorry, say again.
John Sokul, S-O-K-U-L, Hinckley Allen.
Okay. Very good, gentlemen. What would you like us to know?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, I'm here tonight on behalf of the John Flatley Company with respect to 10 Ferry Street. It's a pretty well-known property in Concord, but it's, you drive by it and you don't see it. It's largely invisible from most places. And before I start, I do have a couple of things I would like to submit or hand out. I have two letters of support from two existing tenants in the building. They're short and sweet. And I did bring full-size copies of the master signage plan for the property. Does everybody have one of those?
We do.
And then there was some back and forth on this application with city staff. We originally submitted an application for an electronic message center at this location. And I just want to make sure everybody is looking at the current version of the plans for the sign, which looks like this. You have those. I mean, there was a little confusion about the square footage. You have this. It looks like everybody does.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in any event, we submitted an application several months ago, and I think it was actually on the board's agenda and got continued a few times while we were speaking with city staff about it. And at this location, we had proposed an electronic message center board because there are so many tenants at the property. We wanted to be able to identify each tenant at different times. We weren't thinking about doing anything moving, Las Vegas-style flamingos, just primarily identifying the property and the names of tenants. And we learned in no uncertain terms from city staff that they were adamantly opposed to an electronic message center at that location. And should we proceed and should we get a variance, they would themselves appeal the variance. And we did not want years in court fighting over a sign at that location. So what we did was we revised the application, revised the sign. It's now a backlit freestanding pylon sign. It does say Concord Center on it. It also has, this is one of the reasons we thought electronic would be good. We did want to have a civic or a municipal component to it. The bottom of the sign says Downtown Concord welcomes you. It has the City of Concord seal. On the back, it says, Drive carefully. Again, the City of Concord seal. Come back soon. We know it's a gateway corridor to the city, and we are flexible as to what actually goes on there by way of wording, phraseology, or symbols. I believe this needs to go to architectural design review, and we could talk specifics about any of that. And the goal is to create some visibility for the property, which we're going to talk about in a minute, and also have the opportunity to identify, and this is the proposal for this sign, for tenants at any given time. And the way the property is designed is that there, it's an old building. It was built in the 1900s, the early 1900s. And there are 91 occupiable spaces within the building. And right now, out of those 91, 58 are occupied and 33 are vacant. And as far as attracting new tenants, what people are expecting in this marketplace, which is a very competitive marketplace for office, I mean, I think we can see it with what happened with the sale price for the Liberty Mutual, former Chubb Life property, which sold for, let's see, it sold for about $42. No, I'm sorry. It sold for about $16 a square foot on a 96,000-square-foot building and 114,000-square-foot building in good shape. This building has about 188,215 square feet of usable area. And given what's happened with COVID, given what's happened with the softness and market demand, the property owner, the Flatley Company, is being very proactive in recruiting new tenants and addressing their needs, and many of them want increased visibility. And as far as, you know, the variance hardship standard typically relates to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. And I did bring, this is a small plan, this is the larger version of a small plan that I submitted with the application. This one is in color, and it shows this property and building in the context of the neighborhood. So what's outlined in yellow here is the property. You can see how long and narrow it is, and you can see how big it is compared to the other properties around it. And then what's outlined within the red and the yellow is the building, and you can see how big it is. It's about 864 feet long, almost three football fields long. And it doesn't have frontage on the east. There's railroad tracks there. It does not have frontage on the south. It's bordered by properties. It does have limited frontage on Main Street. The access to the property is off Ferry Street, and even the frontage on Ferry Street is oddly shaped. And then it does have frontage on Route 202, the state highway, but that doesn't count under the ordinance as far as legal accessible street frontage because it's a limited-access state highway. So, in any event, the other things are, it slopes downward west to east from North Main Street. The building sort of just, it goes down. And then over on where it meets 202, the property is about 20 feet below grade from the surface level of the highway. So the northern side of the building sits in a hole when looked at from the highway. So the proposal is to put a pylon sign at the northeast corner of the property, as far east as it would go, 50 feet tall and 220 square feet. And you can see there are some depictions in the handout as to what it would look like from the highway. And it's on a highway that has other elevated signs, street signs, and as you turn the corner onto North Main Street, there's, you know, gasoline station signs and other business identification signs. And again, if you look at the signage plan, the master signage plan for the property, for an eight-acre property with 91 spaces and 864 feet of frontage, it really has incredibly modest signage right now. And we believe something like this is appropriate, given the owner's desire to elevate the profile of the building, to be proactive in combating market forces, and really given the topography of the building, which is essentially hidden from Main Street. And it does run parallel to North Main Street, but it's behind a bunch of buildings, and it has very limited frontage. I drove the property earlier today. I drove around it. I've driven by it 100 times. You just sort of forget it's there a little bit. And you can see it from the Speedway gas station across the street, but only a little piece of it. And when you drive in, it does have, you can see down the bottom of the master signage plan, the Concord Center on top of the building wall. But that's only visible from a certain angle, and it's not visible from three sides of the building. And it doesn't do anything as far as identifying any of the specific uses or tenants in the building, which we believe is appropriate. And so some of the special conditions are the topography, the size in relation to other properties in the neighborhood, the fact that it's in a hole or 20 feet down below elevation of the highway, and just the long, long expanse of the building. Even when we're working with code, to apply the zoning ordinance to this property was difficult because it had so much limited frontage, and most of the definitions with respect to what's allowed by right for freestanding signs relates to building frontage. I'd be happy to answer more specific questions, but that's our proposal in a nutshell. We think the request is measured and appropriate. When we submitted the application, we didn't have the benefit of the minutes from your December meeting where you discussed at length several sign applications. And I think a lot of the sizes proposed here are very similar to sizes that the board recently considered up at exit 17. But we'd be happy to answer questions, and that's the proposal in a nutshell. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, John. How are you?
Good. How about you?
I'm good. I have a few questions. First, one of the things you're asking the board to do is to make an initial determination about whether or not the sign is permitted by the zoning ordinance. What authority do we have to do that?
I'm asking for a variance for a third freestanding sign at the property where two are allowed.
No, I understand that, but I also understand that you're asking for either us to decide it's not illuminated or to grant you a variance for an illumination.
I threw that in out of an excess of caution.
Okay.
I do not believe that this backlit sign throws lights onto any adjacent properties. I don't.
Okay.
I don't know how the board considers backlit signs. But I'm not familiar with many signs that just have a spotlight and faces directly onto another person's property either. But in my personal view, my professional opinion, I do not need a variance. I don't really need a board determination. But if it's something the board wanted to talk about, I wanted to flag it in the application.
Okay. So I would encourage you to address the variance criteria as they relate to the illumination issue. And the other thing is, your application does a very nice job explaining why it needs to be so tall because you're so far down, and I'm understanding why you would need a third one. But why does it need to be so big?
Well, it needs to be so big because we want to do a few things with the sign. We actually want to identify the property, the Concord Center, and we want to have some tenant names on the sign. We would like to have more tenant names on the sign, but at that location, with the cars traveling along that corridor, anything much smaller wouldn't be visible, meaningfully visible. So what the applicant did with its sign people is to figure out how many tenants could you really have that could have some meaningful visibility, and what would that look like, and how much space would it take? And that's what they came up with.
Is the road width and configuration and speed much different than the Main Street?
Right. It's faster-moving. Yeah, he said it better than I did. But the traffic's moving faster, although it's coming off the exit ramp and starting to slow down, but it's not crawling along like on Main Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
So you said that the small amount of frontage you have on 202 does not count for your, does not count in the calculation for the amount of area of signage you're allowed?
When you're trying to figure out under the chart and the ordinance how much you would be allowed to have until you get to the cap of 100 square feet, you do the frontage calculations, and it's not an easy calculation to make. But the short answer to your question is no, you would not use that frontage in making that calculation.
But that doesn't restrict you from putting, you want to put the sign where that frontage.
Correct.
So there's no entrance into the facility from that, right?
There is not.
And in fact, I mean, you'd have to go all the way around. Is it a risk that could be a little misleading because it could almost look like someone, like those businesses are there, when in fact you really have to go almost, you know, like around the block and into another road to get in?
We need the identity as people are coming into the gateway of the city. And at the same time, by knowing the building's there, they're going to be able to take that left at the light and get to there because there is a monument sign that's at the front on the Main Street.
You know, we know there was some discussion at the December meeting on GPS and whether your building is now findable by GPS more readily than it would be. I mean, even if you're using GPS to find that location, when you get off the exit and you start heading down, it's nice to see a few tenant names in the Concord Center. Yes, I'm getting close. So that's the thought process there.
But are you a little worried someone might, and obviously there's no way to take a turn there, but say someone's coming south on North Main Street, they might see the sign and then take a left on 202, thinking they're going to get in that way, and then realize they can't. And just at that point, they have to basically get on that highway one way or the other.
Yeah, the signage is really for the benefit of people traveling east-west on 202.
Okay. Thank you.
You asked actually part of my question. If you're anticipating this directing people that are coming into Concord, why is the sign on both sides so people leaving also they're seeing it? Because that's, they're leaving. There's no way for them to get back to the property.
Well, it's not just directional. It's also brand awareness.
Okay, that's.
The owner has had this property since 1986, has done a beautiful job maintaining it in a first-class condition. And so it really hasn't had the benefit of, as John said, visibility. So, you know, we're building brand awareness because the market is rapidly changing in a very difficult situation right now in the office market.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then I have one more question. I think it's nice that you'd like to promote the city, but I don't know, have they agreed that they want their name on this? And Downtown Concord welcomes you. Because again, you've calculated your sign to take that into consideration, and they may not want it. So, you know, you have all this.
If they don't want it, we could utilize that area as left at the light or, you know, something that's more directional. But we felt being a gateway, it was something that was a carryover from the other sign that we were proposing. You know, there's such great stuff that has happened in the last five years in the city, and that is truly one of the major of the two gateways to get in there.
No, it's a nice gesture. Okay, thank you.
Can you help me better understand the illumination issues? I know it's not an electronic sign, but...
It's just a backlit sign like any other, like a Market Basket sign would be, like Hanford's would be?
Yeah.
Internally lit.
In the application and the agenda, there's some reference to casting light on other properties. I mean, you've got, it's going to be spotlight on the sign. It's not shining.
There's a provision in the ordinance that prevents casting light onto other properties. And I do not believe this casts lights onto other properties. And so I mentioned it just in case the board wanted to discuss it. But it's like any other sign that's along the highways in Concord. It's nothing different.
An internal lighting method is less invasive than a light fixture that's shining onto it because it could be the potential of bleed, you know, if it's a light fixture.
If I recall, when we've seen this issue before, there's a, we only address whether a variance is required if there's already a determination by code that they disagree with you. Because if code agrees with you, there's not going to be an issue. We don't have to rule on it. There's no need for a variance. It's not going to be a problem. But if we don't...
I'm not requesting that variance tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So hopefully, okay. Thank you.
So you're not requesting number one that's on the agenda, the hearing notice? Sorry.
Because you don't think you need it, and there's been no indication the city thinks you need it.
I phrased it a little bit different in my application. I said, if anyone thought it was necessary, then I'd like to apply for it so I didn't have to come back for a subsequent meeting. No one at city staff has said a word about it. I believe code is fine with it. It's carryover language, really more from the electronic message center board, which I had more concern about than this sign as far as casting any light. So I'm not asking for that variance tonight. I withdraw that request to the extent it's a request.
All right. Thank you. So without the variance, by right, you would be able to construct a sign that was 100 square feet and 50 feet high?
Or 100 square feet and 20 feet high, I believe, is what we've calculated.
And the elevation, so you'd still be looking down at it, right? 20 feet doesn't give you the height you need.
No, it gets you to the bridge elevation.
Just one more question. I'm trying to think, if you go the entire stretch of 202 from, you're at the very far end downtown, all the way out to, you know, the end of Concord, is there, is there any other frontage, privately-owned frontage, or is it pretty much all, it's pretty much all, I guess, state or?
Limited access highway.
Just limited access. So would you, are there any other private signs for businesses during that, on that entire stretch?
Well, I don't know where the Concord border is, but we're pretty far west towards the end of 202. But let's, I mean, let's run it up to exit, what is it, the East Concord exit? I don't think there's probably any signs in between where we are and the East Concord exit.
There's a, I'm not even sure. Is it Rhymes or another propane company that's up at the other extreme?
Yeah.
Has an elevated sign? And I don't know if that's on 202 or 4.
I think it's 393, yes, or 293, yes.
We wish we were highly visible from Main Street without a We wish we were highly visible from Main Street without a row of buildings in front of us. We would, we wish the railroad wasn't right behind us and we were directly, uh, on I-93. But we're, you know, we're, as you can see, we're far away from 93 if we were going to try to position something that way. We're.
And did.
We're in a hole.
Are you able to or did you consider mounting a sign on the roof of the, um?
Yeah, city staff wasn't crazy about a sign on the roof.
Uh huh.
And if you look at the, the wall sign out back there, and I do have a picture somewhere of the, what the wall looks like back there, it's, the meaningful portion of the building where there's wall, um, wall space is all glass.
Very visible from 93.
Man, it's not very visible from 93, but I do have some pictures that show that. Can I just hand, hand them this?
Yeah.
And while, while I'm handing out pictures, this, this shows essentially where the sign would go and what the parking lot looks like looking up at, uh, 202.
So go ahead and, go ahead and just tell them that. So what I was explaining to John is, um, a lot of our tenants are, are local tenants, you know, a lot of people that commute back and forth. So as we said, we're trying to build brand awareness and it's more of a local type of tenant. We're not looking to do a large sign that is more of a national tenant on 93. This is really something that, uh, you know, integrates with the downtown and, and is something that, you know, people will consistently see as they commute and travel.
Do you have, um, variances from zoning board on parking?
Would have to, I'm only been with the John Flaherty Company for one year. I would have to investigate that on the parking. Uh, but we do not have any parking issues over there. In fact, that parking field down near, uh, 202 is, is always underutilized.
Yeah, and don't, I just, it may not be associated with this property, but, you know, oftentimes we'll have people come in and ask for less required parking because there's just not a lot of retail activity and then there's less of a need for it and people, you know, it's not.
Yeah.
High traffic.
The dense cities, in fact, a lot of cities and towns have been adjusting their office requirements because they realize that the parking is oversized. It's not the, uh, the large offices with the sea of workstations it used to be, you know? John does own a project in Nashua, a former digital equipment facility. And again, with it being multi-tenant, uh, common concerns in each space and those type of things cut down on the number of people in the building. Uh, they call it non-simultaneous occupancy.
The point I'm trying to get to this, not, stop me from wrong, there's not a lot of people that, uh, that come to this location that don't, don't know where it was or, you know, they, they're the people that arrive there, arrive there pretty frequently. But I think what you're telling is, is you're not approaching the signage as a way to attract more foot traffic or to keep people from getting lost, it's to raise the profile of the property.
It's to raise the profile and also to give our larger tenants the ability for identification, which is something that we do not currently have.
I thought I had a better picture, but I don't. But this shows, you know, we can sort of back into it, but this shows the, um, the east side of the building and how far it is from I-93, which is, uh, 1,126 feet away.
Any other comments or questions for members of the board?
You're now talking about visibility from 93, but I thought the point was to have visibility from 202.
It is. I'm, I'm trying to show that visibility from 93 wouldn't work.
Okay. Can you see the sign from 93? The proposed sign?
I doubt it. I doubt it because of the distance. You've got the interchange and you have the other, the train tracks in the area.
Maybe in winter at the right angle. If you have a big SUV and you're high up, maybe you'd catch it.
In your tractor trailer?
Yeah, maybe you'd catch it, but.
All right, thanks.
I doubt it.
Yeah, it would have to be like the right time, the right angle.
Anything else, members of the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may step down, please.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this application? Is there anyone who likes to speak against this application? I do have two letters.
You went, you went too quick.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. You swear to tell truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
My name is Julianne Gaudory. I'm the executive director of Kimball Jenkins and a butter to the property.
Who would you like us to know?
Should I keep my mask on?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
We can hear you.
You can hear me, okay. So as many of you may know, Kimball Jenkins is, um, an abutter to the property that where the variance is requested. We're an arts and cultural organization that has been in Concord for 40 years. We have buildings that date from 1790 to 1882 and we are the anchor and the beginning of Concord's historic district, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, this sign, if it were approved in the size that is proposed and potential backlit or any kind of illumination would be directly visible from our property. Uh, we, uh, have a significant portion of our income is from weddings, rented events. Um, and a lot of community organizations host their events at our property specifically because of its historic character. Um, and, uh, we feel that this sign would be detrimental to that, um, to, not only to our income, but also to us really being able to maintain the character of, um, the historic district in Concord. Um, we employ, uh, we employ six, um, staff members and 15 to 22 faculty. Um, at any point during the year, we have 12 full-time, um, summer camp staff. Um, we significantly contribute to the cultural and civic life in, um, Concord in the region. And, um, we know that opportunities in the arts and cultural opportunities significantly contribute to the quality of life and livability in the, in the region. In addition to our own economic activity, like I said, there are a lot of community groups such as, um, Rotary Clubs, um, lots of state, um, organizations, nonprofits, people who rent our facilities, um, because of the historic character, as I mentioned, but also people who are celebrating the most important parts of their lives from weddings to baby showers to, uh, memorials and celebrations of life. This sign, again, we feel like would be detrimental to that, um, to, to the character of not only our property and the state and the people that gather there, but also to the entire North Main Street, which is, um, governed by the Heritage Commission and, uh, on the National Register of Historic Places. In addition to our property, there are many other historic landmarks in that region, including the Walker School, the Pierce Mans, um, the site of the first, uh, where the New Hampshire Legislature first met, um, the old cemetery, um, and then the, again, the neighborhood is, uh, primarily 19th century, small-scale businesses and residences. Again, we've established that the 50-foot pole is what's needed to raise above the highway. This is equivalent to a four-story building and the width of the sign is about the width of two of the lanes of the highway. We don't feel that this, that the original intent was, is really intent of the ordinance, you know, is compatible with what, with the variance request, that the ordinance was put in place to protect the, um, the character and visibility of the, um, of the city, of the gateways, the gate, the appearance of the gateways to the city. And we ask that you think about the long-term character of the, um, the city as a whole and especially the historic district and the businesses that, um, not only contribute economically to the city, but also to the, um, culture and social civic life, um, to think about that long-term impact instead of, um, only the current, um, tightness of an office rental market and potential advertising opportunity.
Do we have any questions? Just for the record, could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. G-A-D-O-U-R-Y.
Thank you very much.
Have you had, did the applicant reach out to you to talk to you about the sign or see if there's any accommodations that could be made?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this application? Ernie, do you have any comments?
No, sir, no.
Mr. Richardson and Mr. Sokol?
Could I ask Ernie a question?
Yeah.
If you know, if we were to grant this, would, does it have to go before planning or any other committee in terms of the, um, the safety of the sign? Like, I don't know that it's.
No, it'd have to go to architectural design review and then if there are any, um, engineering requirements and so forth, I believe that would be dealt with, uh, through code or through engineering.
Okay, thank you.
But you mean traffic safety, right?
Yeah, like to make sure that it's not, um.
Distracting.
Yeah. Do you, do you think architectural design deals with that or they only deal with the aesthetics of it?
No, and it's a state highway, so it would have to be the state that would weigh in, but, so, no.
Let me read, I, I, I'm out of order here. I meant to read two letters of support here. One is from Beth Richards, who has attended for the past five years, supports the addition of wayfinding signs along the corridor leading to I-393. Uh, she can, she attests that the location is a challenge for both Concord residents and visitors. I have another one from economic, e-commerce logistics, uh, one of, the owner is, uh, who's leasing space there, who is lending his support for the additional signage. Anything you'd like to add based on what you heard from the public?
Yes, if I could. So we were well aware that the, uh, Kimball Jenkins estate is down there and would be happy to dialogue with them if they had any, any comments. Um, we did speak with the city staff at, at length about, about the sign and, um, nobody from Kimball Jenkins, uh, reached out to us. That's not to say we shouldn't have reached out to them, but we just don't think it's going to impact them at all. The, the sign is being put, it's set back from the highway. It's going to be put on the far eastern corner of this property. And I, how visible it will be from the Kimball Jenkins, um, estate, you know, I don't know. But it's in the OCP zoning district. It's in furtherance of a large, longstanding commercial property. Um, and, um, it's, it meets the setbacks from the highway. It's not going to extend out over the highway. It's set back from the highway. And again, we put it on the far eastern side of the property so that it didn't start coming in close to, uh, the Kimball Jenkins estate property or that historic area across, across 202. Um, and, um, in listening to some of the board's comments and again, um, thinking about how the board has discussed some of the other, um, sign proposals, what the applicant proposes to do is we would limit the sign height to 40 feet rather than the proposed 50 feet. With the thought being that, uh, we're 20 feet in a hole, the ordinance allows 20 feet tall signs and a 40-foot sign gets us out of the 20-foot hole and halves 20 feet of height above the, um, grade of the highway. And, um, as far as the 200 square feet rather than the 220, it's only double what's allowed under the ordinance, it's not more than double. And for a building that's about eight or nine times size, eight or nine times the size of anything around it. Um, and, you know, the fact that the, the property owner has been very judicious and measured in what, what he has for existing signage, um, he's, I just don't think should be used against him. It's a very challenging marketplace. Uh, he's got the conditions of the property, the toe of the slope and the topography and the size and then in the hole. And I think a, a sign is warranted here. And, um, uh, we don't believe it's going to have an impact on the Kimball Jenkins estate. But that said, we'd be happy to talk to Kimball Jenkins if the board approves it and make sure that it's done in a way that, um, is sensitive to, to them. Um, you know, we've offered to put some signage at the bottom of the sign for civic benefit and if it's something we can do to assist, we'd be willing to talk about that.
You, maybe I, uh, you probably said this already. So you're, the, the, the hearing notice says you're requesting 440 square feet. Was, is that your original plan?
It's 220, but it's double-sided. It's, it, go ahead.
Originally you had a design where one end just came out like this and we talked about that and you changed your design.
I thought, I thought we had changed that. I wasn't aware that the hearing notice that still said that.
Yeah, it's on.
Which I don't think it's a problem you're asking for less than what the hearing notice says, but I just wanted to.
We originally had a sign that looked like this.
So it.
And then when he said we were going to dou- double count both sides, we just collapsed it.
We made it compliant regulations.
Collapsed it, yes.
Got it.
So forget, forget about 440.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's compliant.
So again, for a.
220 per side?
It's 220 per side.
The definition, it's compliant because it's less than 18 inches in thickness.
Okay.
Yes. It's less of 18 inches of an angle between the back sides of the sign. It's not just one back-to-back sign, which counts for one sign under the Concord zoning ordinance.
So a freestanding sign can have language on both sides and only count towards the one flat surface?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, so it's 40 feet in height and you're doing 200 feet now?
That's what we propose as an accommodation to the board.
No, he said 200. He changed it.
200 or 220?
We propose 220. What I've offered today is 200.
Same, 200, okay.
For the board's final consideration, yes.
And 40 feet, that way we're not as.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
So you'll just ba, it'll basically the same design, just the whole thing will be 10% shrunk down or whatnot?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that, I think I understand this, but I just want to say it, that, so again, the hearing notice, you're asking for relief from Article 2269A, which is the 40-foot height, the 200, um, maximum area. You're asking for 2869C3, which is the, uh, horizontal dimension of 22 feet. And then to have a third freestanding sign, you're not asking anything about illumination. And so if you go to get design review and your sign permit and you have it internally illuminated and they say this violates zoning, we're going to see you again. Just wanted to make sure and we're all on the same page.
I'm glad you raised those other things because we, we've been talking about height and size. I still need a variance for a three where two are allowed. But if, if you look at the, if you look at the, the sign master plan, you would see how small those, those. And things that the city is counting as freestanding signs. And I'm not disputing their determination, but some people might not consider.
Right.
And respectfully, one of the two that exists there now is a historical sign that talks about the.
Yes.
The, the.
History of the building, yes, yeah.
Okay.
But, um.
Thank you.
But actually, doesn't, when you're asking for 200 square feet, but that has to include all three signs, right? Remember?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Each sign can be up to?
I'm asking for a variance for this particular sign.
The other signs are all there.
You're right.
Oh, but they don't count in your total.
They don't count towards this.
They don't count towards this particular freestanding sign, which will be new.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And with that, I'll declare the hearing closed.
Okay.
If you like, yeah.
Um, I don't have any concern about the number of signs. I think it is a very oddly shaped property. It does have a lot of signs, but considering what it is. It does have a lot of signs, but considering what it is, I think adding one more sign is not unreasonable. I think the property is uniquely shaped. Um, I think adding a third sign would not be inconsistent with the neighborhood. I don't think it's going to miss surrounding property values, and I think substantial justice is done. On the height, the property is definitely unique because it's, it's sunk down. I don't think the height in and of itself will cause a diminution of surrounding property values or, and I think substantial justice would be done. I am concerned about the spirit and public portions of the criteria because it's certainly not consistent with what else is out there. As we discussed, there are no other such signs on the highway, so I have a concern about that. But I could probably be persuaded to grant the height variance. The size variance, I'm having a really hard time with because what we heard is what the tenants want and need, what the landlord wants and needs, that they're building brand awareness, and I appreciate all that, but that doesn't arise from the uniqueness of the property. That arises from what the owner wants, and that's not a basis for hardship. The size is definitely bigger than any of the other signs in the neighborhood. We've heard concerns raised about impacts on surrounding property values. So I, I'm not convinced on the sized ones.
Thank you. Andrew?
You know, I'm, I'm, I was trying to see if I could figure out roughly if, it, it's an extremely unusual lot, obviously, because of the history of it, that it has such little frontage, giving, given how wide the building actually is. It probably takes up three or, you know, what might be around three or four city blocks if there were blocks there. But it has such little frontage, especially on Main Street, so if, if all of the width of it counted as frontage, it probably would be allowed a sign that size, right?
I don't know.
The size is limited in the chart within the, um, within the ordinance itself, so I mean, that's, um...
And it maxes out at a hundred square feet, right?
That's correct.
So no.
Well, it maxes out at a hundred square feet for any in, in that zone or in the entire city?
Based on the square footage and, uh, I mean, not the square footage, but based on the, uh, the frontage. And in this case, it's used, uh, the parking lot is being used as frontage because they don't have any actual frontage other than the Ferry Street.
Oh, so you are counting a lot of that width as frontage?
We're counting, I think it was eight hundred and sixty-four feet long in the, um, analysis. I can find it.
Okay.
It's around there.
Okay, so they are getting, getting a fair consideration for that because, because their actual frontage looks to be extremely slim on both 202. It's tough. It is, it is sort of a slippery slope when they, I chugged a little when they said we're only going for twice as much, but it, it wasn't completely out of line, given some of our prior decisions, which, um, we denied that the sign on, on, um, Loudon Road, which was, you know, maybe, it was quite a bit larger. We allowed the one up by Hannaford, those are some of our most recent decision, I'm sorry, Market Basket. I'm kind of torn, I thi, I, I definitely think they should get some variance, and especially for the size, and I'm getting a little caught up on where they're putting it. It doesn't seem that logical spot, other than just really for advertising. Because it's not, which I can appreciate, I mean, you can get advertising with your sign, but it's really pretty far away from where anyone would actually turn into the building. It almost, you know, if someone was looking for a tenant there, they could almost crash trying to get in there if they had never been in Concord before.
And well, that was part of the reason I asked about, you, really, the benefit of the sign is only if you're coming into Concord, because you could actually get to the property that way. If you're leaving Concord, having the signage there for wayfinding, i- it doesn't make any sense. I don't have a problem with the height at forty, it makes sense, they are in a hole down there. I'm, I'm glad we're not dealing with the illumination issue. I, I do think that they should have another sign, the property is huge, and it is weirdly configured. But I will say, I've never had a problem finding that property. I feel like there is signage for it when you're on Main Street, that you see the entrance to it. I don't know how reasonable it is to advertise to people that aren't near the entrance to a property to advertise the property. So I, I do have a hard time justifying the, um, the variances and how it meets the criteria of hardship, so...
Yeah, I should say, the first three years I was on this board, Dave Parker was on it, he was the biggest sign, sus, more suspect of signs than anybody, so I kind of cut my teeth on that, listening to Dave. And so, uh, I'm torn on this one. On the one hand, it is a giant building, and oftentimes are, we have a lot of flexibility because they have such big space. That said, it seems like a lot, um, for this space. And, um, I should also say, at least from my perspective, most of the tolerance I've had for variances are, um, on signage have to do with kind of safety issues, you know, do I know where the trucks are supposed to turn into? I'm going to get lost getting to the building. The, the applicant is very upfront with us, that's, this isn't about that. So, uh, so I don't, um, uh, I'm glad I'm not making the motion, because I can go either way. I mean, the size, oftentimes, it's the, the size of the building, and I appreciate that, that, you know, it's a challenging market and things like that, so, um, that's where I'm at. Well, that's where I'm not at.
Well, here's the issue that I have. I've driven this road, 393, for probably the last twenty years, I've often, it's eight times a day, round trip, because that, that was my way to work, and I'd go home for lunch and so forth. And I've seen traffic on this thing zooming down at seventy miles an hour, and right at the end, they slow down. Uh, I've seen accidents take place, I've seen rear ending take place, I've seen people do three-lane changes from the right-hand lane all the way to the left because they realize they want to make a left-hand turn. And my concern is now you've got this huge sign that gives you information on four tenants, plus identifies, uh, the center, and I think that just adds to the distracted element of driving. And that's my concern, is a safety issue for the, for the public.
You know, to add to that, frankly, it puts, puts me in a difficult position because I don't, I don't have any technical knowledge on safety of signs. I mean, they're, you know, I like to think someone else would look at that part of it, but apparently, no, that, you know, if, if we did it past this, they could mainly just put it up, no one would study the safety aspect of it.
Well, I would say, we can continue this and ask the city engineer to weigh in on that, if that's a concern.
Isn't, is controlled by DOT, though, not the city?
Yeah.
I don't, I...
But the city engineer would be able to give us an idea of whether or not that sign in that location might cause an issue. I don't think we could stop it or not, but...
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind heading down that path, Laura, to kind of, because the applicant heard a lot from us tonight, um, and, you know, on the fly was making some changes, which we don't really have in the representations tonight.
Right.
And so maybe, maybe the better course might be to kind of hit pause, give the applicant the opportunity to digest some of what we had to say, meet with Kimball Jenkins, talk to the, the engineers, and address some of our concerns. So, you know, I'm not ready to say no tonight, but I'd rather have more of that.
Not so, yes.
Well, you know, I'd rather give everybody the opportunity to adjust based on what they heard this evening.
Right.
Well, it sounds like...
Hang on, they're coming up.
Oh. It sounds like most of us are willing to agree on the height and the third sign, um, and probably the horizontal dimension, although we didn't really talk about that, it's not that huge of a, of a variance. So, so if we, if we granted the height and the third freestanding sign, if they wanted to put a hundred-square-foot sign there, I don't think they need another variance.
Correct.
Right.
So, in that sense, you know, Kim, Kimball Jenkins might, you know, not, not, it'd be, it might, that might sort of be a compromise.
Right.
They could build, just put a smaller sign in the spot they wanted, which would give them quite a bit of visibility, because there's no competition there.
Right. Did you want to say something, John?
I don't think we can.
Unless we let them...
We've declared the hearing closed.
We did declare the hearing closed, but no one's left the room. And if it has to do with the continuance...
All right.
I, I, you're the chair.
I just had a question about the continuance, if I might ask a question.
A procedural question, John, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if the, if the hearing were continued, with the hearing having been closed, would I have an opportunity to speak at the continued hearing?
We could renotice it.
I think his...
Well, when I suggested it, my intention was yes, so whatever procedural we have to do to accommodate that.
Thank you.
I think historically, yes.
We could reopen, this...
I think whenever we've done that, we've allowed them.
Trying to watch Chris's body language, we could, we could reopen and table it or whatever.
I would say, since it's been closed, to be safe, we would renotice it at the city's expense, because we closed it, and then we suggested continuing.
We can't reconsider that action now.
Usually what they, what they would say is, anyone who's, anyone's been noticed, who had an interest is here, we just tell them now. That's...
Right, and where no one's left, yeah.
But I don't know if that's why...
You can also just take comments on any new information presented at that meeting, so it doesn't reopen everything. But I was going to make a motion, so...
Please do.
Okay. I was going to make a motion to approve, um, the request for Article 2869A to allow a freestanding sign with a height of forty feet. Article 2869C3 to permit a freestanding sign with a horizontal dimension of twenty-two feet. Article 2869C7 to permit a third freestanding sign on the property. I didn't mention the area, so I was doing those three first.
Would you mind limiting that to just the number of signs and the height of the sign?
Not the horizontal dimension?
Not the horizontal dimension?
Sure, I will amend my motion.
Or should we just do it one, one...
I can do one at a time, sorry.
Let's do one at a time.
So I'd like to forget everything I just said, Rose. Article 2869A, Table of Maximum Sign Dimensions, to allow a freestanding, freestanding sign with a height of forty feet.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
You know, I, I'm inclined to support, I'm inclined to support that as well as the other motion that, that's expected, and, and to deny the, the size, because I'm not, I think the safety is a factor, but I don't know if that's the primary factor for me. I think that it's a kind of location, so that's, that's where I'm coming down. Um, if everyone else goes for continuance, then obviously, I, you know...
Well, the continuance is in front of us.
Right.
It's not on the table.
I haven't done that yet, that's the right, I'm just saying that, I'm just doing the height one right now.
Yeah, I'm going to go vote, no, not because I won't necessarily get there eventually, but because I just want to see it all kind of in front of us as one presentation.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And I oppose.
And I'm opposed.
We have two opposites, Mr. Monahan and myself oppose. The motion passes three to two.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 2869C7 to permit a third freestanding sign on the property.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm opposed, for the same reason.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing, to give the applicant, um, opportunity to present, uh, new information, and to ask our city engineer about any safety concerns with having a, uh, sign that is two hundred square feet and having a horizontal dimension of twenty-two feet.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
And the chair says nay, too. Passes three to two.
Oh, sorry, then, I apologize, I just assumed, it was then at the next meeting, so the February, whatever date that is.
All right, should we retain the paperwork?
It'll be the, the first Wednesday in February.
First Wednesday in February, I don't know what date that is.
Mr. Cartley, you're welcome back.
Thank you, Laura, nice to see you.
Thanks, Laura.
See you all.
Have a good night.
And I will plan on being at the next meeting to...
Oh, yeah.
We'll see you in a month.
Thanks, Nick.
You're welcome.
All right, the next case is Case 122, 16 White Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District, Michael and Christine Ferrari. The applicant seeks approval to replace an existing garage with a new, larger, attached two-story garage with an added bedroom, bathroom above, which would be connected to the principal home, and would require the following variances. 2841H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a larger garage to be constructed, which will result in less non-conforming rear and side property line setbacks, and a smaller percentage of lot coverage, which brings the lot coverage into conformance with the zoning ordinance. May I swear to win? Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Would you please identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
I'm Christina Ferrari.
And I'm Michael Ferrari, Concordian Anshim.
What would you like us to know?
We have a garage that is kind of small for what modern cars are like. My truck is, it's a twenty-foot garage, five-twenty, barely fits in there, it's just an extra foot. My wife's got her Jeep Wrangler, who, again, is, the eight-foot doors on the garages there, it's, it's tight to get in. We have a, appointment to be made now for a mirror that got clipped as she was trying to back it in, it's after it, because it just...
Sorry, can you say that again?
We have an appointment, we have an appointment to be made now for a mirror that we have to be placed on her Jeep, because again, the doors are narrow and, and it's...
It, it's tough to...
And again, for, for cars that are getting, are getting bigger, it's kind of harder to get in there. So we are, we're looking for a, a bigger garage. Um, and we thought, again, we would like to put a massive bedroom over there and attach it to the house, so we could have, like, one-floor living. I'm getting closer to retirement, my wife, of course, is younger, maybe not, but, but I would like to, if you don't proceed, you know, without as many stairs, if possible. And, uh...
Yeah, and we like the area, we want to stay.
No, yes, we moved here about three years ago and stuff there, um, we've lived in various parts of the city for the last thirty years. And, yeah, we've settled on this one because near the park, near downtown, we find it very, very nice. We, uh, there was, when we, uh, was looking over it again there, two things that were, actually brought to attention last night by one of our neighbors, um, on the sketches of the plan, it showed two things that were, well, one of those is concerned to her, uh, she lives at 18 Raam White Street. And she noticed that the, we were looking for a dormer on the sketch on the backside of the garage. And she thought that was going to invade on her privacy and stuff there, and we totally agreed with her that we had no actually intention of putting a dormer on the backside of the garage, we were looking for a dormer on the front side, but not, you know, so I wanted to, you know, she was concerned about that, and we relieved her of it. It would be, it would be off the bathroom to begin with, and I don't know why we'd want a dormer off the bathroom overlooking somebody's backyard, and so we had no intention...
Probably won't have enough headroom for a bathroom if you don't have a dormer.
So...
That's probably why the dormer's on the plan.
Okay.
So, before you cast off the dormer, you might want to give that some thought.
Okay.
Isn't it on the front of the building, on the plan?
What, the dormer? No, it's both sides. If you look at the roof plan.
And that's, and that's a possibility, it's why the architect included that in there.
Mm-hmm.
So we assured her that even whatever glass was going to be there, we'd have it, privacy glass, so it wouldn't be looking out their backyard, and she was concerned about her privacy and stuff there.
So, do you want the board to consider it as having the dormer or not having the dormer?
Oh, geez.
Well, now that's a...
Well, thanks for pointing out...
That, thank you, yes, for that, uh, I guess we should...
We're an all-purpose board, we help with...
I guess we should consider that, but again, to, for our neighbors concerned, that we have no intention of...
Yeah.
Using it for the purposes of...
To peek at them, you know.
Evading their privacy and stuff there.
Is that, are you talking about Mary Deal or a different neighbor?
Different neighbor.
A different neighbor.
A different neighbor, yeah. Yeah. And then the other thing that we noticed when we talked with her is that currently where, well, it said that showed that we're going to be coming into, moving the garage.
Back of the garage.
Closer into the driveway than where we are now.
Ten feet in.
Yeah.
And that was not our intention, that's kind of a.
Making it a larger garage, where we're going to already lose space of our driveway. And moving it down from the back line where it is now, even more so, we lose even more driveway space.
I lost track of what you were saying there, as I, as I look at your plan, your existing drawing, the sketch of your existing plan shows the existing building three and a half feet from the property line, close your minds.
Right.
Correct.
The new sketch shows it at ten feet.
Right.
So you said you're moving it closer to the property line?
Not any closer than what it is now. The new one, we would like to actually keep the new one the same three and a half feet, but it's going to be a twenty-six by twenty-six garage.
But it says five feet on the plan. I'm, you, I.
Five feet on, on the.
The side of it.
East side.
Yeah.
It is.
Talking about the back.
Backside.
Right, which says ten feet on the plan.
But it's existing, it's three and a half.
Right, so.
So, we don't actually want to move it the ten feet, is what we're saying.
Well, that would pose a problem for us, because we can only consider what you've presented us.
Okay.
If you want to change your plan and file a new application, you can do that. Now, I can't advise you at this point whether that would be more or less likely to be granted, but.
Can we do an extension, like, is that what you're?
It would have to be renoticed.
So you're saying it's going to be closer than ten feet, this is not accurate, the current, what you've.
Right, that we were, we were actually thinking that we would do five feet, and we had talked with the architect and but I didn't notice it in time, you know, when we, we didn't really notice it.
You didn't catch that something.
Yeah, we didn't catch that.
You might, go ahead.
No, sorry, you go ahead, Chris.
You might want to reexamine things and have another go at it. I can see reasons, looking at this plan, why moving it back may not work either in terms of the internal layout of the building, so it sounds like there's a little confusion about dormers and placement and so on. If we approve this, this is what's approved, or if we deny it, this is what's denied. But we can't kind of adjust the plan on the fly. We don't have that privilege, because it has been noticed and we have to consider what is on paper. You follow?
Okay.
So, it's your call.
So we need to go with it or?
Exactly, if you want to go ahead, but if you change it, then the approval no longer applies unless the change is not material to the approval. And moving it from ten feet to five feet would be, would be material, because you'd be in greater violation of the ordinance. You follow me, from what you've shown us?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay.
And it's not really for you, it's for the board. Since they're currently at, from a side setback at three and a half feet and four feet from, or I guess that's the back setback, I don't know which way we're looking at it.
Yeah, north side, yeah.
So from the north side, they have a three and a half foot setback and then a four foot setback. As long as they're making it more conforming, so if they're not making it less than four feet on the front or less than three and a half on the side, isn't it still? It's a double negative, isn't it still being less non-conforming?
It is, but it's still not conforming. So, the board would have to, we would have to have the exact proposal.
Well, yes, we do, we would need to know what you were doing, it couldn't be, well, we want to do it back, but then you're really going to do it something else, we would have to know, but again, it wouldn't be, if they said they were going to do four feet, it would have to be four feet or five feet.
Yeah, if, if, if we approved ten feet and five feet, and you made a change in your design to make it six feet and eleven feet, let's say, that, the board might not consider that a material change, and it might not affect your variance, but we wouldn't know until we saw it, but it certainly would if it went the other way, if you got closer. So, it sounds like, it's your call, we can consider what you've shown us, but it sounds like you might want to have a little deeper conversation with your architect about exactly what the physical realities of the form is and the inner workings of your plan here, because I'm not sure you can move it back, A, and B, if you do, it's not the plan we have in front of us.
I'm sorry, Chris, that's why I was, I didn't hear the last part.
It, we don't, it's not the plan we have in front of us if you, if you move it.
Okay.
So, it's your call.
Are you saying it's detrimental to us to, if we make the changes to it, it might, we might?
If, if you make changes, then it's no longer the design that we approved. And it's entirely likely, given the changes that you've just mentioned, that it would be, that it wouldn't validate the variance, and we'd have to start all over again anyway. If you change it.
So in other words, it's, let's say hypothetically, and we don't know if we will or we won't, but let's say we approved as you've submitted, and we give you the ten feet, and then you decide to make it five feet, that's invalid, they're not going to, you know, code will come and tell you have to tear it down, which.
Hopefully, they won't make it that far.
Yeah, right, they'll, they'll look at your foundation and say you can't do this.
Or you go to pull a permit, presumably they would notice it wasn't what was approved in the variance, and they'd say, wait a minute, we got to talk. So, are you, are you clear on what I'm saying, or?
Yes, we need to like start the process over if we want to change it.
If you want to change it, you need to start the process over. The question of going back to your architect has absolutely nothing to do with zoning. I'm just looking at the plan, and I suspect it's not as easy to move around as you think it might be.
Right.
And still have it function. I'm thinking about how the, the upper level of the garage interacts with the house.
Yeah.
And again, we could move forward with it as is, you're already here, you already paid the fees, and if you decide later you want to change it, you have to come back, but if you decide you don't want to change it, your approvals are done.
So, you do have that option. You could own it. Up or down, depending on how the board decides.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Maybe we could take the next case and they can discuss it, and then we can come back to it.
Would you like to do that?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
To take, they want to take the next case and then, so we can discuss it.
Would you like to discuss it for a few minutes?
Do you two want to step out and discuss it and figure out what?
Yes, that would be a great option.
All right.
You only have one more case.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion to recess this case until after the next case?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The case is recessed until after the next case?
Thank you.
If you would step out into the hall?
Yes.
Because we can hear everything in the room?
Yes.
Thank you. Next case this evening is Case 0322, One Whitney Road, GWP Gateway Performance District, Barlow Signs on behalf of Interchange Development LLC. The applicant seeks relief from Article 28-67H to allow a mechanical scrolling sign on a freestanding monument sign to be located at One Whitney Road solely to advertise fuel prices for the gas station convenience store located within the retail development project. A mechanical scrolling sign is a sign using a track or roller-mounted alphanumeric copy that is changed by mechanically-driven means and is non-digital, by which I think you mean non-electronic.
Correct.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record?
Yes, my name is Brandon Courier, I'm from Barlow Signs.
Laurie Rosio from Interchange Development.
Before you get started, I want to check in with Ernie on this. If this is a mechanical sign and not an electronic sign, is there a variance needed?
Yes.
Okay. And why is that?
Because the mechanical sign itself is actually prohibited, let me go down to my sheet.
Well, I've got it right here, can I read paragraph H?
Of course you can.
It says, "Signs which appear animated or projected or which are intermittently or intensely illuminated or having a traveling, tracing, scrolling, automated, or sequential light type signs which contain or are illuminated by animated or flashing light."
So, Ernie, it was your take that it could conceivably fall under that definition?
Yes, it was, we discussed it quite a length at staff level.
Okay, so that's why we're here tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not the placement of the sign, which we already approved?
Right.
Okay.
They're looking to, how much, would you like me to clarify?
Oh, I think I got the answer to my question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
But you're, and you're, but you're not appealing the city's decision on that, you're asking for a variance.
Right.
Correct.
Right, for the mechanical sign that is in your proposal.
Correct.
Great, fire away, so to speak.
So again, Brandon Courier from Barlow Signs here with Laurie, representing Interchange Development at One Whitney Road. We are seeking variance approval for a mechanical scrolling, price-changing sign. As you see up here in the drawings and the drawings that you have in front of you, it's going to be internally illuminated. A mechanical scroller is a way to control the prices that are displayed for the fuel prices in a safe manner. So speaking about safety, you guys are very familiar with how this property is now going to have a roundabout. We have to move the existing sign, that's where this sign came from. There is now going to be constant traffic passing the sign, the sign is going to be very close to the road, followed by a sharp decrease in elevation back into a drainage swell. So with regular manual changing tiles, it's going to put the employees of the gas station in danger, especially when we come into winter months, we have ice, they're going to have to then somehow navigate around and then over the guardrail, which we know is at a larger height because of the bike safety bar. So in that case, we are proposing a mechanical scrolling system. And these have the same illumination value as any other gas station with a tile changing, so there's going to be no issues with brightness, it's not going to be a distraction to any motorists or passing by. It's going to, again, as I mentioned, be a huge safety savings for the employees that do work there. So with that being the hardship, again, we're just trying to get approval for these mechanical changers. Thank you.
Thanks. Questions from the board? Enter.
Well, so your argument is that your station varies from all the others in Concord because the sign is on the roundabout and would present a greater safety hazard than the changing of signs at other gas stations?
Yes, that is correct, with the traffic circle and with that taller guardrail and no access from the backside, it would put employees in danger, especially in winter months.
And what do you make of the, and you may have to refresh my memory a little on the origin of why it's on that roundabout, but is it, is it in the roundabout primarily because of your design choice, or is that really the only? Is that, is that roundabout being created by you, or is the roundabout already there?
The roundabout is being created by the city to take care of the influx of traffic in that area.
Okay.
It's part of Public Street?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the new roundabout going in, we are required to move the sign back, which then puts it in, in a area which goes into a drainage swell, and that's where we're coming into the issue. We're not going to, with the height of the sign and the danger of it being with someone, if someone's on the road, they're trying to change, they're going to have a fifteen or twenty-foot pole to go over the guardrail and then try to potentially reach these numbers over there, and it's just, it's not a very safe situation for anybody, especially if you have, per se, a ladder or whatever kick out into the road, now you have a ladder that's out in the middle of traffic, which is dangerous as well.
I'm all set.
Just, is it, I apologize, maybe I didn't hear at the beginning, so is it the scrolling, is it controlled mechanically at the location of the sign, on the back of the sign, is it in a separate building? How, is it?
All the mechanical components are within the sign, it's on a.
Does the employee have to go outside to change the price?
They do not, they can change it from, from the building.
Great, thanks.
Okay, questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? The record will show that there was no one in either case, for or against. Any comments from code enforcement?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to point out on behalf of staff that we recognize that the design, the redesign of the of the rotary has created some of this, and the city's in support of this particular proposal.
Very good, thank you. Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Andrew, what do you think?
Well, I, I suppose they didn't, again, it's hard to say with this, you know, with this, because they're creating kind of out of, out of scratch, but they didn't create the rotary, and it is a safety issue, I suppose that could have been an argument, or that was their argument for why they should have got the electronic one in the first place, but we were pretty reluctant on that, because that would seem pretty unfair to all the other gas stations who want the same thing, but this does seem to address it without, without, without offending the city's standards for how the, the gas station, you know, animation should look, probably from, you know, from passersby, and it's going to look pretty similar, it's just that changing it is going to be more convenient. I'm not sure, you know, if we get fifteen more applications from every other gas station, why was saying, well, it's going to be easier for us too? Because there's always going to be, it's always going to be safer to do it from inside than from outside, it would make sense, but their property here does seem to be unique.
Laura?
I agree.
Yeah, this seems like a very rational solution to a problem that, in part, the city created.
Yeah, I agree too, this doesn't fit the definition of EMC as defined by the city or the ordinance.
You don't think it does? No. I'm inclined to agree, I, I think it's a very good solution to the problem, and it's certainly, this sign is not, I think, what the city drafters of the ordinance had in mind when they were thinking about electronic signs being a problem. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. You're welcome. Do I hear a motion to reopen Case 1-22?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Come on, back up.
Thank you.
What would you like to do?
Roll on.
Okay, so we'll proceed with the plans that you've given us.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough. So you were partway through your presentation, you may have been most of the way through it. We're talking about an addition of a garage with some living space above it, which would be closer to the house and further from the property lines than the existing garages now.
Yes, and attached to the house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, is there anything else you'd like us to know about it?
Our neighbors are happy with the plans.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't.
Thank you very much, oh, did somebody have a question?
Well, did you see the letter from Mary Deal?
No.
No, I did not.
You probably ought to get a copy of that.
Yeah, because not all your neighbors are in favor.
Oh.
Mary Deal has written a letter, and I will speak to that in a moment, but I'm not going to read it word for word, because it's two pages, single-spaced type.
I wonder if we could put the aerial map, so we can see where Mary Deal lives in relationship to this house.
Sure.
I just wanted to give you a chance to address her, and it seems, and Chris is going to summarize it for the record, but it seems like she's concerned about the privacy issues, the change in the historic character of the neighborhood, her view. Do you feel like going upper level is going to, you know, be kind of right on top of her house?
Which one would be her house?
She, which is three houses away.
Three houses on White Street, like down on White Street.
Right, she's three houses away.
So she's going to have to get out in the street to see your house?
Yeah.
I don't think she's going to see your house now.
Is she considered in a butter, she says she's in a butter.
Well, she is in the sense that she's within the radius that the city considers as ours.
Not a directive.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, Ernie, can you point out which is, which is which here?
Okay.
That's our house there.
Right.
Yours is the one where the lot's highlighted, correct?
Yeah.
And.
Next door, next to us.
And Mary Deal's house is?
Sherry.
Three down.
And then there's our other neighbors in that one.
By three down, we mean what?
Yeah, there's which way.
Yeah, yeah, where the cursor is, where it was, so, right there.
Yep.
That's Mary's.
Oh, okay.
She's at twenty-two?
Yeah, she's going to have a challenge to even see it. Okay, thank you.
So which of your neighbors are in support?
Sherry at eighteen, right behind us, she, she met with us last night, and she, you know, as long as we were not infringing on her privacy, she was fine with it. The Magellan and. The Magdalen and Neal on Rowell Street, right beside us on the east or east side, I guess that would be.
Yeah, they're fine.
Have been in supportive of it there.
And it will impact them the most because, you know, their daughter's bedroom is right there and.
Cameron at 2 Rowell Street has, has been very supportive of it also.
Mm-hmm.
Fran offered to come down, she's on Essex Street there, 26.
And she's behind you?
She, so Essex is the one that comes into Rowell, the two one-way streets that connect into that.
Right there.
That come in there, so.
I know the neighborhood. I live not far from it.
And.
Kind of a rough neighborhood.
It is a rough neighborhood, yeah. At least after I moved in.
You're on the other side of the park.
Park?
So those are the neighbors that have been, have been supportive of us.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll check out code enforcement's thoughts on this. Any, any comments, Ernie?
There's nothing on this, no.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Very good. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Record will show there was no one present to speak for or against. We have made reference to Mary Deal's letter. She lives at 22 White Street, as we've noted earlier. As I said, I won't read the whole thing through, but she, she makes, raises several concerns. One has to do with when the neighbors were notified and whether or not they had enough time to respond. I assume all the notifications went out in the usual manner. The, she had some question about privacy because of the windows being up higher, which is a discussion we've already had. Let's see. She seems to be defending the privacy of the inhabitants at 18 White Street, but that isn't where she lives.
Mm-hmm.
And lest I seem cavalier about this, the board members have all read this letter. I'm not.
Correct.
I'm not spinning this out because I just don't want to take a lot of time to read it in detail. She asked that we postpone the hearing. Obviously, we have chosen not to do that because procedure's been followed in the usual way, so there's, I'm assuming the board is in concurrence, there's no need for that.
But I, and I agree, I do have a question in that regard, it, because I believe the governor's emergency orders obviously lapse, so now we're here in person. Is there, is there, do we have the legal authority to allow someone who is concerned about COVID or for any other reason, maybe disabled, to appear by phone or by Zoom?
I would have to check with legal, but I do not think so at this point.
Because they have to appear in person?
Hmm.
It would, I mean, if there was a way to allow someone, I think it would be a good, if we had the authority, I would be in favor of allowing someone, you know, who had good reason to appear by phone.
But how would we see them and hear them and everything else? Because we're not on a Zoom meeting, we're not, we, we'd have to have Zoom going concurrently with a live meeting.
Just let them call in.
I think.
There must be a phone.
I think there's probably a technical way to do this.
Probably, but we're not set up for it.
Whether or not it's, it's legal, I guess, would be a question. It's, it's, I suspect that it probably could be arranged because I believe what the law calls for is that the meeting has to be in person.
Yeah.
So I, but that's not a question that we can answer here tonight, but it's also not something that bears right on this one.